We have not received any updates. There's been a few correspondence between the Planning Department and Mr. Costanza. He was supposed to appear tonight to give us an update on where he's at with this. We can hold it for a second call if we choose, or we can take a vote and deny it, or we can vote for a continuance. So I'll just quickly go through, and I'll start with you, Becky.
We heard this case in July, I think, and then we did a site visit August 7th.
That's correct.
I'm hanging out dates here.
Yep.
So it's been two months since the site visit, and we asked for a plan at that point. It's disappointing, no one is here.
Agreed.
I'll defer.
Very good. Corrine?
I think before we take any vote, maybe we wait. Maybe he's just...
For a second call? Okay. Okay.
I guess we can wait for a second call. I mean, we, like you said, we've eaten at a site visit to this property, which we typically do not even do. We gave him the benefit of the doubt of that, and he still didn't come through with anything after, like Becky said, it's been two months.
Yeah.
So I guess we can wait for a second call.
Ken J.
I think we should wait as well.
Second call. And Chris?
I'll wait for the second call.
And Kevin?
When would the, would you do it next?
Well, we'll just wait. I mean, we can go right to the end of our meeting if he pops in. I'm wondering, you know...
No, I just, I just think the majority of our audience is here...
Is anybody here on 342? Show of hands. Yeah.
I would say go to the end of the continued cases, and then that's it.
How about that?
That works.
Yes, sir.
So I see that I had a voicemail. He's still, he's still planning on coming. At 3:45, he'd been, he's planning on coming, so...
Okay.
He's just, you know, he knows the meeting started at 7:00, it's 7:05.
Okay.
But I, we know Mr. Costanza, so when he comes in, I think you don't have to continue to attend.
Right. Okay, so Board members, we'll just hold this for a second call. And Mr. Clerk, if you could go on to our next continued case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next case is 153 Andover Street. This is Route 114A zoning district. Request for a special permit to allow a contractor's storage yard to be operated at the address listed above. Additionally, the applicant requests two storage containers to be placed on the property for more than 180 days. Request is made by Interstate Property Management, care of the owner, Preza Abruzo, LLC, docket 25-5112.
Okay. Is anybody here on 153 Andover Street? We're off to a rousing start here tonight. Mr. Planning Director?
If they're driving through Salem, I could...
Yeah, I don't know. Brian, if I could, one thing I did want to ask about this case, which I don't think, although it covers the same address, I would like to know, I believe Lowe's was under an enforcement letter, and perhaps you can update us on that? Do we have an update on that?
Sure. So this is a complicated property that has been condoed, so there's some common areas, and then there's some exclusive use areas. So there's, what we're talking about is not the Lowe's, and not even the common area portion. The common area portion was under a Conservation Commission violation, not, you know, not due to the owners, but people essentially throwing trash in the wetlands, amongst other things, like couches, this, about two weeks ago. So we got that out. But, yeah, so this, this is just about this one, this one portion of this much larger property where there's, there's like a condo deed, there's a condo master deed that governs it, so a lot of, a lot of players.
Okay, but specifically Lowe's. I thought they were also under an enforcement through Mr. Cassidy for outdoor sales.
Outdoor sales with, with non-vegetation?
Yeah.
Yes, that's still...
Have they complied? Do we know, or...
I do not have an update for you on that.
Okay. Well, all right, Board members, we don't have anyone here to speak on this case as well, so I guess we'll go to our third continued case and see what happens there.
Our third case is 9 MacArthur Boulevard. This is zoned R1, map 61, lot 15. Request a special permit under Section 30.2, Section D, in order to build in addition to convert a conforming two-family dwelling into a conforming three-family dwelling. The request is made by Thomas McCormick and Cheryl Leon McCormick, care of James Ciprietta, Esquire, docket 25-5115.
I hope I didn't butcher your name. Sorry.
Spot on. Sorry.
Welcome. You moved into the starting lineup.
Yes. By default, if not, but I'll take it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Appeals. We appreciate the opportunity to revisit the Board and to make a supplemental submission, which I think all of the Board members received in a timely manner, and hopefully had a chance to at least peruse it. Not to repeat all of the facts that we had laid out on the record at the earlier hearing, I would just like to point out some of the things that have been modified on the plans, which are now the operative plans. The biggest, we tried to address the largest and the most mentioned concerns that came from both the Board and the neighbors. So as the Board knows, obviously, we're looking to add a mere 400 square feet of living space above the right-hand side of the second floor area of the home. And the two issues that seem to have been very burning were parking, and whether or not the use as a three-family would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I'd like to address the parking first. As is shown on the, the new plan, which is substantially different from the existing conditions, which show an existing four parking spaces in the front of the house, and I think that was a little bit bothersome to, to the Board and a number of the neighbors, that that was maybe a little bit overuse of that, that front space. So what we've done is to remove one of those four spaces, keep the plan to architecturally improve the front of the house, and then to create three conforming spaces at the rear of the building. So that would give us six spaces, which complies with the parking requirements. It also unclutters the front of the house. It increases safety from coming and going from, from the home, because the access and egress to those three parking spaces in the rear, which have a gen, a very generous turning and backing radius to get in and out of those, those spaces, is by a driveway that conforms with the driveway requirements. So that would be easily accessible. As to the front of the house, that would be, again, reducing whatever non-conformity that would have been, which currently exists, and of course, it's pre-existing non-conformity, but to bring it into further conformity. So we would have six spaces, three in the front, three in the back, as opposed to adding spaces to the front of the house. The second was whether or not the three family, or three units in a two-family zone would, by special permit, be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Well, they framed the neighborhood when we were here the last time, and we pointed out in our supplemental submission what the neighborhood, left and right, and those were the neighbors who spoke, what is the condition of the property, and what it is, is it used for? How many units are there? Well, we did some research. So to look at what the neighborhood consists of, at least the immediate neighborhood, we have, at number 7 MacArthur, we have a house in the front, connected by some sort of a structure which we refer to as a breezeway, whether it is or not, and the Board will determine what it is, but some structure connects the front house to the back in their condominiums. So at 7 MacArthur, there exist, according to the assessor's records, three bedrooms and one bath in the front house. 7 MacArthur, the rear, three bedrooms, three full, and one three-quarter bath. That gives six bedrooms and 4.75 bathrooms at 7. We are proposing a total of, we have now, two bedrooms on the first, two bedrooms on the second, a bath on the, on the first, a bath on the second. The additional space would be one bedroom and one bath, and that would yield us five bedrooms, three baths. So on the left, we have six bedrooms; on the right, we have six bedrooms. We're coming in under that, that number. It's concerning the parking of the neighborhood. We've sent photographs to you, and, you know, not to criticize, everybody's going to park where they can on their own property, and that's, that's the way it happens. But we have something that's much more detailed, much more organized, and simply much more accessible and in compliance with health and safety. It, it's not, it's not going to be a food fight to get in and out of there, where you have unassigned parking spaces and unnumbered, and undesigned parking spaces. So what is the difference between the three unit, or the proposed three unit, and what we have there in the neighborhood? Well, it's pretty obvious. It might be equal to, but it certainly doesn't add any density, it doesn't add bedrooms, it doesn't add people. That house at 9 MacArthur with the 400 square foot addition is able to be constructed as a matter of right. So we can construct it anyway. That's not why we're here. It's how are we going to use that? Are you going to put up a door and a wall and have the same number of people, or are you going to have an overly large second floor with the same number of people? So density is not going to be a concern. Parking is not going to be a concern. Traffic is not going to be a concern, because the same number of people are going to live there, whether it's a two or it's a three. Then there were some, some other concerns from the Board and from individuals in the, who spoke. And I would point out that it makes some sense that these concerns would enter the minds of people hearing the presentation and looking at the plans, and one was, well, I just don't like three families. Well, that's fine, to an extent, but that's not the legal basis, that's not the legal standard that the SJC has set out for determining whether a special permit should or should not be granted. Someone said, "Well, there's nothing to say that that small third unit isn't going to be sold to somebody who has more people or children and more cars." Well, that's speculative, and speculation is not, is not something that meets the standard that the SJC has set out, and the legislature has set out, when determining whether or not a special permit should be issued. The third was, and this is always a concern, no matter what city or town I've ever appeared in, it's always been a concern, parking. People are going to park where they want to park, and, and I understand that there's some concern, while they may be parking on MacArthur Boulevard, they may not be using their parking spaces. Again, it's speculation. It could happen, but it's not part of the record. And what the, what the courts have set out as a standard is that in judging and determining whether or not a special permit is going to be or not be granted, has to be well reasoned, based on fact. Well reasoned and based on fact. Not speculation. I think the facts are on our side. I think we've met all of the requirements to hurdle that bar of not being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current use. And it doesn't mean just be, you know, we're not saying, and fair minds could say, "Well, it's going to be detrimental, because you're adding a person, or you're adding a bathroom, or you're going, adds 400 square feet of living space." That may be detrimental, but is it substantially more detrimental than what you have there? You will recall and can see from the plans that the construction all takes place within the footprint of the existing building. You will also notice that the, the addition is, is very small, and it's, it's not going to increase the height. The architecture of the building as proposed will keep the, the roof line, it will keep the, the appearance of, you know, in, in compliance with the, the existing house and looking like maybe a one or a two-family house, which is architecturally appealing. It's not something that's going to be boxy and just thrown up there as like 20 by 20 by 20 or something, as some places, sometimes we see in modern construction. So that's not substantially more detrimental. So what would be? What would be? We're not adding people, we're not adding cars, we're not adding any excessive burden on public utilities, on sewage, water. We're not requiring any more fire protection, we're not requiring any more police protection, we're not creating any strain on, on the public, on public safety of public utilities. So when you take this into consideration, and with an open mind and, and fair view of what's being proposed, I would suggest that it would, should be clear, that this special permit may be granted without substantially derogating from the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, and is not substantially more detrimental than what you have there, with four cars parked out in front, perhaps backing out into the, into the roadway, and cars maybe parking askew all over the property. I'm available for, obviously, for any questions. The owners are here with their son as well. If there are any questions regarding the use or the construction or the design of the property, we're able to take those when the, when the Board is ready to give it.
Very good. Thanks. Go ahead and stay up at the podium.
Yes.
And I just want to make sure I point out and get clarification from Mr. Zakelli. Town Engineering said a stormwater permit would be required, and are you aware of that?
Yes, we're aware.
Aware of that.
I think we're also aware...
Is that accurate? Because even though there's no building...
Yeah, because, well, yeah, they probably told you exactly why.
Yes.
Someone tell me. Does anyone, do we have details on why? Is that normal?
Cheryl had the conversation with the engineer.
Can I just re-identify yourself, please?
Cheryl Leon McCormick, 9 Cassiotis Lane Middleton, owners of 9 MacArthur Boulevard. Good evening. I spoke to the engineers, and they told me the stormwater, water permit would be required just for the sake of parking.
Okay.
Nothing further.
Sake of adding parking?
Correct.
More impervious, be...
Correct.
More impervious to the back.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, just want to make sure that was clear at the top. Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think it might, if, if I didn't mention it, I think the, the surface of the parking area is, is to be those formed concrete...
Pavers?
Possibly.
Pavers with, the grass can grow up.
Will it get into all options?
Right.
Okay. So not tar, not paved?
No.
I don't know. I, I don't want to say no, but I'm not sure at this time.
Okay. Good enough for me. All right. Becky, we'll start down there with you.
Okay, so I did visit the property and did get a tour, thank you. On the left side, then, the new driveway, what is the width of that driveway?
Eleven and a half feet.
Eleven and a half feet?
Yes.
Okay. And do you feel that's sufficient for the parking spaces to back out and turn, to get back out onto the street?
Well, they'll, they'll be coming, they'll, they'll back, they'll back out, three-point turn, come out the driveway, and come out, come out forward to the street.
So that's enough space?
There's enough space for turning, turning radius.
Okay. And I just kind of missed what you said about what the surface would be?
We're trying to make it as ecologically friendly as possible with, and we've been looking into these, and I'm not really sure what they call them, but you've seen them, they cast cement, and then, then the grass can grow through them as well, rather than putting down even some of the more expensive and the more attractive pavers, which then would cause water to sheet and wouldn't necessarily be able to be absorbed into the ground.
Okay. And my final question is, what, would the access be from the back parking spaces into the property?
I'm sorry, I was distracted.
What is the access from the rear parking spaces into the property? Or do the people have to walk around the house to get into the house?
Well, go ahead, you're the architect.
They have access. They have full access to, they would have access to each unit, both in the back and the front.
All three units could access from...
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Corrine?
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you. Ken?
No questions, thank you.
Ken J.
So what's the square footage of the addition? Is it still 400?
400 square feet. Give it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Chris?
No questions, thank you.
And Kevin?
No questions, thank you.
So currently, right now, is there a curb cut on the left-hand side of the property, or is that...
No.
So that would be something you'd be requesting through a DPW?
Yes, and if the Board obviously would to, were to grant it, it would be obviously a condition.
Okay. And is there any vegetation, lodge trees, or anything that have to be taken out because of this driveway?
No.
Very good. I don't, I too, I think that's it for me on questions, so I'll go out to the audience on this. If anybody's here on 9 MacArthur Boulevard, and again, I'll entertain new comments, not regurgitation from our prior meeting. Anybody here? 9 MacArthur? Anyone online? Brian?
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Bill McKenzie, 34 Hobbs Street. I think this is great that they're going through all this motion, because a lot of people in the town in the past just do it anyway. So I, I commend you for that.
Very good. Thank you. No, we're all good. Okay. If there's no further questions from the Board, we'll come back and deliberate, and Becky, we start it with you.
So I'm not voting on this, so I'll defer to the Board.
Very good. Corrine?
I took into consideration, you know, the new plan and the fact that you were parking in the back. I'm still not a big fan of the three spaces out in front, and I'm still a no.
You're still a no. And Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no problem with this. I, I think that they created a good parking situation, so I'll vote for this.
Very good. Thank you, Ken. And Ken J.
I'll also vote for this. I like the, the parking situation is much better, so they, you know, won't be on the street, so I'm good. I would approve this.
And Chris?
I would also vote yes, as well.
And Kevin?
I am not voting, so I will defer.
Very good. So I guess it comes down to you as truly. I am not a big fan myself either of parking in the front, and I, I do appreciate the effort that was put in to come up with an alternative plan. I think stacking of vehicles at the front would have been detrimental to the neighborhood, although those vehicles still have to back out, and they're not tandem, so that lessens that blow. And I, I guess with that said, you know, I think, I mean, you are an architect by trade, I guess, or not? You're pretending to be one, I guess. But I feel like, you know, the, what you're trying to do here and provide for your family, I think, is a good thing, and I feel like you'll do this driveway tastefully, I, I, at least that's the hope. So with that said, I will vote in favor. And with that said, Board members, I will need a motion.
Make a motion to grant the special permit under Section 30.2, Section D, in order to build in addition to convert a conform, conforming two-family dwelling into a conforming three-family dwelling, and that the exterior appearance of the structure is not substantially changing. The structure remains residential in nature. Adjacent properties would not be adversely impacted. The proposal would not be detrimental to the public good, and would not substantially deviate from the intent or purpose of this bylaw. A payment of $28,000 to the Affordable Housing Trust must be paid prior to the granting of a certificate of occupancy.
I've got a motion. Any further discussion? Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Now, the motion passes. See the Planning Department, and good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Chair?
Yes.
342 Andover is here. If you, if you wanted to go back to the first case...
Okay. And I see Mr. Costanza is also here.
Yeah, that's 340, that's 342.
He's 153, I thought. I'm sorry. No, I've got it backwards.
342.
342. Mr. Clerk, if we could reread 342.
This case is 342 Andover Street, zoned R3, map 39, lot 010A. Request a finding to expand a pre-existing non-conforming use of the property to allow landscaping businesses that park in the rear of the property to also be able to park in the front of the building. Additionally, an expansion of the use of the main building to allow other businesses to rent professional or general office space inside the building, as the dental lab is no longer operational. The request is made by Guy Costanza, docket 25-5108.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to hear me out today.
If you could, reintroduce yourself.
My name is Guy Costanza, from 342 Andover Street here in Danvers.
So, Mr. Costanza, give us an update, please.
Okay. I know we were instructed to get a plot plan and a parking plan, and that is in process. It proved to be a harder task than I thought, reaching out to just under a dozen surveying companies, many rejections for the claim that they are too busy and not taking on new clients, and two of them that I received written quotes for, after a month of back-and-forth with them, are between $6,000 and $8,000 for these parking plans, which is quite exorbitant. I did find someone who's able to do it for a little less than that, and that's in process, so I could use a little bit more time to present the parking plan and plot plan to you as requested. However, we've done other cleanup in the meantime, and spent a few thousand dollars for a dumpster service and construction company, or excavator company, to remove the debris that was on the property line near the cemetery, so we've done quite a bit of cleaning up and removal of vehicles as requested. In addition to that, school bus that was used as a storage container, that's been removed as well, and all unregistered vehicles, and including the boat, has been removed by my tenants. So it's an ongoing process, and we're doing our best to comply and make things in line with your requests.
Well, Mr. Costanza, when we called you initially, you know, you weren't here, but I think the date of July was brought up, and we're now into October. This case was first filed in July.
Yes.
I believe you're under a, a notice from the town as well for non-compliance. So from where this Board sits, it seems like we're kind of dragging our feet here, and not to belittle the costs associated with this, but we didn't bring this problem on, right?
I understand.
So I, I just, you know, this is a request you're asking for. I don't want you to flip it around the other way.
No.
You're, you're trying to do something that's not currently permitted at this property, and we've been sitting and waiting for a parking plan and a site layout for months now, after this Board went and did a site visit. So I'm glad there has been some progress on the property, but it's moving at a snail's pace, so, you know, I'm going to put it out to the Board members, and I, before I do that, I will go and see Mr. Zakelli. Is there anything you want to add to that, or any updates from the Planning Department?
This week, several, I would say, yeah, two surveyors reached out, trying to find out more exact detail, details of what we needed for, you know, what, what you wanted in this parking plan. It's essentially an existing condition survey with a parking plan overlaid on top to find out, to figure out where all these vehicles, these construction vehicles and other, the vehicles, where they can all physically park. So, you know, that's the only update, was like, in the past probably five workdays, I've talked with two surveyors related to this property.
Okay. So, Mr. Costanza, when do you feel like you're going to have the information that this Board's requesting?
With the current surveyor that I'm working with, that is in process as we speak. I just finally connected with him last week after the other 11 surveyors. He should have it within about two weeks.
So you would look to continue this case until our October 10th meeting?
November 10th. Do you mean?
I'm sorry.
Sure.
We're in October.
It's been that kind of year.
Yes, sir.
November 10th meeting.
Yes, sir.
You feel that's a date that you'll hit?
I...
Because we've continued this, I believe, four times at this point.
I wasn't aware it was that many, but I know it was more than once.
I think it's at least.
It wasn't four continuances. It was more than four meetings, for sure, but it was.
So maybe three continuances over.
This would be the third.
Okay. Okay.
So I just, again, I'm just trying to put some reality into it.
Oh, yeah.
So you tell me, you're driving the boat here.
Yes, sir.
You think November 10th would be enough time?
That's the next meeting?
That's our next meeting, is November 10th.
Yes. I'll...
And that would mean in the office the Tuesday prior, so that information can get out to this board. We can't get it on November 10th.
Right.
I think it would probably be November 3rd, 3rd or 2nd?
Yeah. Fourth. Fourth. Fourth.
So does that work? Because if not, we would go.
Okay. I'll make that happen.
Okay.
And if I have any difficulty, I'll reach out to Brian tomorrow.
Just because there's been a number of meetings here, and post-site visit, I think it's your first time, and since the visit, I'm going to, I'm going to just quickly strobe the board for our questions. So Kevin, we'll go down to you.
I have no questions for the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
No questions. Thank you.
Ken?
Did you have the electrical inspector come and look at that receptacle on the stump?
We removed the cord from that section, so to my knowledge, it's not being used. I can get an electrical inspector if we have to. I wasn't sure I was instructed to do that. We basically just disconnected anything from that.
So did you do anything with the receptacle? Because it looked like there was a GFCI on there. I don't know if there was one before, but you haven't changed nothing?
No, sir. I wasn't sure I was under that instruction for that. I know we pointed it out. I recall that when you visited. And we just disconnected things from it.
I don't think that's going to do it, because it's still there and someone's going to use it. So you should get the inspector out there just to see if that's the code.
Okay.
Because you have the Romex going up there. There's no conduit. It's just on a stump. And it looks like, you know, I mean, if someone gets hurt.
Okay.
It's going to be bad stuff.
I'll reach out to the electrical inspector tomorrow.
Great. So what's up with that blue pickup truck, like, on the side? Is that being used? Is that registered?
That was a plow truck, I believe.
Yeah.
That one of the tenants was using just to plow the property.
Okay, so it's being used?
Yes.
And it's registered?
He has to get that registered still. I'm going to be contacting him tomorrow to make sure, or have him remove it immediately if he won't register it.
And what about the tires underneath the tarp, the camouflage top? Is, are those supposed to be there?
Were those in the front of the property or the back of the property? I'm not aware of those.
They're in the front to the side.
From the...
Like, near the, if you look at the truck, the blue truck, it's sort of like in front of those a little bit.
Is it close to the main building?
What's that?
Was it close to the main building?
No. So there's a big trailer.
Yep.
Like, a big trailer in front of the building. So this is up top. And then to the right of that is like a tarp with all these junk. It's a bunch of junk and tires and stuff like that.
So close at Andover Street, not close to the main building?
Correct.
Okay, that would be the tree guy. I'm going to have to, he was supposed to remove those. I'm going to have to follow up on that immediately, also tomorrow. He has removed a great deal of materials and stuff, so I can't confirm 100% if the tires are gone, but I will make sure he gets them out immediately.
Yeah, because I believe they're not. Mr. Planning Director, are those supposed to be there? I mean, is that okay to have some junk on the property? Or I don't know what the limit is of what is legal or illegal.
Well, I mean, it's, it's certainly, if it's, I mean, no, you can't really have just, like, trash or junk.
Yeah, so that's not...
If you're talking, if you're talking about, yeah, it doesn't sound like you're talking about any type of contractor yard situation. You're talking about actual, just like, things that need to go to the junkyard, then no, they cannot have that on the property.
Yeah, it's not like mulch or pavers or anything. It's trash.
If it can't be construed as construction or landscaping material, then no.
Okay.
I'm under the impression that he had the tires as spares, that they are usable for his equipment. If they have a blowout, that they can have something ready to switch without having to order it. But I could still, again, make sure he gets them out of there.
Yeah, it looked like a lot of.
Okay.
Tires, like, being hidden underneath the tarp.
Yep.
And I think that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the tree truck, the tree trucks.
Yes.
Are they still parking out in front of the building?
Yes, sir.
Which is illegal at this point. We understand that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll save the rest of my stuff for comments.
I was pending, you know, they're there pending approval or rejection of my expanded use. But if we get denied, we will evict them.
Okay. Corinne.
So will you be able to have both the plot plan and the parking plan completed by that, what was it, November 10th meeting? Only because I assume the plot plan is done first, and then from the plot plan, you're able to determine, like, your parking plan and draw it out. So if it's going to take two weeks for the plot plan, then you're not giving yourself any time for the parking plan.
Okay. I'll verify his timeline tomorrow immediately. I'm under the impression he's going to take care of both at the same timeline.
Is it the same contractor doing both?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, the same?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, then you probably can't do it.
Surveyor and engineer.
Okay, that's fine, then.
That's my...
I thought you had reached out to two separate companies, one to do the parking plan, one to do the plot plan.
No, I reached out to a dozen, and I didn't think a lot of them would take so long to get back to me. And then the ones that I actually connected with literally took over a month to reach out to Mr. Zakelli for further details, and then finally put a quote back together to me. So it's been almost two months for the ones that I actually connected to. And I didn't want to reach out to a dozen all in the beginning, because I didn't want to get them all on the hook and involved and become a lot more confusing.
Okay.
It became a tougher task than anticipated, but...
Okay, so it is realistic that you could have it done by the 10th, then?
I believe so, yes. Thank you.
Becky.
So I'm going to be specific with you. Do you have a signed contract with someone to do this work?
It's just a verbal agreement right now.
Okay, so you don't have a signed contract with a specific date?
No.
Delivery date?
He's supposedly doing some research as we speak. And because I finally found out about this individual late last week, knowing the meeting was today, I didn't want to, I didn't know what the instructions would be today, because things had progressed the way they have. So I told him I'd give him a yes or a no to proceed following this meeting immediately.
Okay, so you spoke to him last week, but you don't have a signed contract or any specifics from him with a delivery date?
Correct. It should be done within the two weeks he was talking. I'll confirm all that tomorrow for sure.
Is that somebody local?
I believe he's in Danvers.
Without asking for a specific name?
Yeah, I can give his name if you want. Do you want his name?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, Joe Surwodka. He's the chief engineer, and he's going to be performing that task.
He's local?
I believe he's out of Danvers. I'm not 100% sure that it's Danvers. It's Joe Surwodka. He was referred to me by a contractor friend of mine.
Okay.
And he's an engineer. He used to work for Hancock Survey Associates, but I believe he's independent now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. All right, so Mr. Costanza, just to be clear, to throw more conflict at you. So November 4th is Election Day, and I don't know if we're open. I guess I'll go out to Mr. Zakelli. Are we?
I believe we are.
Okay. So it shouldn't delay things, but I think, just to be clear, we plan to go forward on this on November 10th, so.
Yep.
I think Becky's question's a good one, and I would drive towards your surveyor person, making sure that they understand that you need something to be delivered to Danvers Town Hall.
Yes.
By November 4th, so it can be disseminated out to this board.
We're definitely open.
Okay. And we're definitely open. So there you go. All right. With that said, I don't, I guess I can go out to the public if we have any new comments. As we can see, this is a case that's still in progress. We don't have a plan before, so the board won't be voting on anything tonight. The applicant has asked for a continuance to November 10th, so I'll only entertain comments from the public if it's something new that we don't already know about. Go right ahead, Ms. All right, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Suzette Witchy. I reside at 12 Buxton Road. Just going back to something that was discussed at the last meeting, it's my understanding that Mr. Costanza does not have a variance. Is that correct?
There is a pre, there is an existing variance, and what he's looking for is a modification of that variance.
So it's a, it's a variance for non-conforming use?
Correct.
And that variance goes in perpetuity with the property?
That is also correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Is that right?
And, and I mean, just to quickly summarize it, it's always had a mixed-use component at that address. However, that use has changed and came by through notification of the town. So they are currently in violation of that agreed-upon variance. So Mr. Costanza's in here seeking a change.
Right.
And that's what's before this board.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. With that said, board members.
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there another person? Yeah, go ahead.
Tim Gray, Tom Eaton member, 9 Buxton Road. We're in a butter. Just want to bring up a few things that have happened since we were here last as well. The login operation that happens over there last week, it moved to the front parking lot. So we just want to make sure that that was brought up to the attention as well. Not sure if he's aware of any of that, because, you know, I think we're kind of aware that he's a vacant owner. There are still junk vehicles that we can see from Cemetery Road. You know, you, Ken brought up the blue vehicle that's over there that's still unregistered. He did say they were all removed, and then he backtracked and said that that was still on-site and unregistered. So I'm swamping that up again. And then they did bring in a larger piece of equipment last week, a larger front-end loader that they use it in the back to move gravel around. They brought in a large quantity of gravel into the back, and they've been bringing large trucks in and out to load gravel and in and out of the property. So now we have larger vehicles coming in and out of the property, dump trucks hauling gravel back and forth. So we just want to bring that up to your attention as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
So, I mean, they are, they can operate a contractor's yard in the back. The reason why they're here is because they're parking vehicles in the front.
Trying to move it to the front, yeah.
So there are certain rights that carry with the property, including being a contractor's yard. So there would, imagine there would be movement of gravel and that type of thing as part of their use that they're allowed to do. The problem, or the issue at the moment, is that they're trying to expand it, trying to go to the front.
Very good. Okay, so board members, the applicant has asked for a continuance to our November 10th meeting. So if I could get a motion in a second, please.
Motion to issue a continuance for petition number 25-5108 to the November 10th, 2025 meeting.
And a second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Costanza, hopefully, we're going to move forward, and we'll see you on the 10th.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Is, any chance that anybody from 153 Andover is online? And I take it there's nobody here from 153 Andover. All right, so board members, we have a choice there. I guess we can ask for a continuance on that as well?
I would just move it to the end.
Yeah, okay. If we don't have it there, we'll go for a continuance there. All right, let's start out with our regularly scheduled items here. Mr. Clerk.
All right, and this case is 36 Sherwood Avenue, Zoned R2, Map 28, Lot 63. Requests are finding on the Table 2 for a side setback encroachment for proposed addition that will be 13.37 feet from the property line, where 15 feet is required. The house is non-conforming with respect to the front setback, side setback, and square footage. The request is made by Daniel and Hillary Gordon, Dock at 25-5117.
Okay, somebody here on 36 Sherwood Ave?
My name's Hillary Gordon. I live at 36 Sherwood Ave.
Good evening, Hillary. How are you?
Good. Thank you for having me.
So tell us what you'd like to do.
I'm just trying to make an addition for my growing family. I have four kids, so we're making a playroom, and it's about...
Where are they?
There, with my husband. I got the good job.
So you love being at this tonight. All right, all right.
I do. So we're just trying to make it flush with our current wall. It's just about 13 inches in, within the 15-foot setback.
Okay, so just adding an addition. And you're going to encroach the setback, and you are a pre-existing non-conforming? Is that correct?
I'm getting the plan up, sorry.
Sorry, that's okay.
Here it is. This also required ConCom, so this site plan is a few more lines than you normally see.
It's pretty busy.
Yeah, very busy.
So...
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
The, they're asking for 13.37. The current overhang is 12.8, so it's not getting any worse. This is the addition that requires the relief. This other, the addition on the left-hand side does not require anything from ZBA.
The left-hand side, as we look at it?
The left-hand side, as we look at it, yeah. That, this addition on the left is not what we're talking about this evening and not up for discussion.
Only the one on the right-hand side?
The one on the right is, because it is breaking a setback.
Okay. Anything else you want to present to us?
Nope, I don't think so.
All right. We're going to open it up for questions, and Becky.
I don't have any questions. I don't have any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Becky.
I did go look at it.
Corinne.
I just have a couple. So I drove by and I saw your house. It looks like it is, was there another addition put on the house earlier?
We bought it in 2018, and yeah, it used to be one of those rancher, Campanelli Ranchers. So the previous owners went above, and then we did a renovation. We pushed out a little bit three years ago, just about 180 square feet, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Brian, I didn't see a history in here. Did I, was I just missing it from my package?
No, it didn't require.
Even the addition?
No, I don't believe so, because it was all within, it was all within the setback.
Okay. Okay. And so right now, what you're proposing, these drawings are kind of a little hard to follow.
Yeah, no worries.
So you're doing like a playroom, which, is it referenced here as the sunroom?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. No, it's the same. Yeah. And then the one on the left, I'm not planning, I don't even know if I'm going to do it, but it would be like three to four years down the road. But it's just with the Conservation Commission, I had to apply for it all. So it is really just that one on the right, that square on the right, right there.
Okay, all right. So that was one of my questions.
Yeah.
If one of these additions was just proposed now, but from your narrative, it seems like you're going to be doing it later.
Yeah, if at all. But yeah, just the one on the right for now.
Okay, all right. And based on, on the plans that you have, in the way it looks as if, like, the bottom half is being proposed, is this, is this like slab construction?
Yeah.
So you're just continuing that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly, yeah. No basement or anything.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hillary, have you talked to 34 and 38 Sherwood?
Yep.
No opposition from them?
No. I think she'd be here if she did, but...
No further questions?
Thank you. Ken J.
You're very, I liked your Halloween decorations.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
I know, no other questions.
Thank you.
I appreciate the compliment. I spend a lot of money on those for some reason.
Yeah, it was scary.
Tell 20-year-old myself that I would spend hundreds of dollars on Halloween.
Yeah, you do.
That's nice. Chris?
The house has come a long way in a short period of time. It's beautiful. No questions. Thank you.
Kevin?
What is it that actually goes into the setback? Is it the sunroom part or the covered patio part?
Both of them, because it's just a continuous buil, building, and then the overhang is just going to be like a gable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Gordon, how how big is the existing of square footage-wise?
I think it's just under 2,800 square feet.
2,800? And and how big is this addition?
It's.
At approximately.
Yeah.
Twenty by 26?
I think it's like 500 square feet.
Okay, I think that's all he had. And you're aware this is going to require a storm water permit?
Yes, yes.
And if I'll just go out to our planning director, Brian, so the ConCom part of it, explain that to us a little bit.
They're right on Frost Fish Brook, which takes it's hard to say fast. It's one of those tongue twisters.
Frost Fish Tish Brook.
So pretty much anything other than mowing, they have to go in front of ConCom. So they're doing some other landscaping as or planning as associated with that. I think you're this Thursday or you-
Yeah, I'm on Thursday.
So that's happening in parallel with this permit request?
And they're on for this Thursday, so it's, you know, permitting week for the Gordons.
It's a lot of fun.
All right, I don't have any additional questions. I'll go out to the public on this. We're here on 36 Sherwood Ave. Anybody would like to be heard? Hearing, seeing none, no one online, I take it, Brian, I will come back to the board and we will deliberate. Becky.
I won't be voting on this, so I'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Very good. Corinne.
I will vote for this. I like the plan and I also like what you've done so far, so I am a yes. Thank you.
I will vote for this too.
Thank you. Ken Jay.
I'll vote for this as well.
And Chris?
I'm a yes as well.
Very good. And Kevin.
I my obviously, I'm not voting, so it's in some ways neither here nor there. But I am concerned that especially in Woodvale, we have generally conforming lots. Maybe there's some pre-existing non-conforming there because we've changed setbacks here and there. I am concerned that we let people just continually take little bites at the apple, right? So this one's not a big deal. It's a few inches on this side and the next the next one's, you know, a foot or two on the other side. If we just let everybody take little bites at the apple, no bite seems bad, but before you know it, the apple's gone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I think it's a lot of house on a small lot. However, you have a lot of people. So I know you don't have basement either, so I see that as a challenge. And with that said, I would vote in favor of this. So if I could get a motion, board members.
I'd like to make a motion to issue the finding under Table 2 for a side setback encroachment for a proposed addition that will be 13.37 feet from the property line where 15 feet is required. And that the proposed extension alteration of the use is not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure to the neighborhood.
I got a motion. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Very good. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Happy Halloween. All right. Mr. Clerk, moving right along.
Our next case is 5 Watson Parkway. This is Zoned R3, Map 39, Lot 97. Requests a variance under Table 2 for a side setback encroachment for a proposed garage addition that will be 12.1 feet from the property line where 20 feet is required. Additionally, the applicant requests a finding under Table 2 for the front setback encroachment of the proposed garage addition that will be located 25.4 feet from the front setback where 30 feet is required. The request is made by Eric and Mary Beth Doane, Dock at 25-5121.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. I'm Eric Doane. My co-owner with my wife, Mary Beth Doane, 5 Watson Parkway. Our family has lived in Danvers since 1989 and are current at a current address since 2002. We are seeking relief for a variance for a side setback encroachment of 12.1 feet and also for a finding for a front setback of encroachment of 25.4 feet for the purpose of building our two-car garage. We're getting older and would like to have the convenience of storing our vehicles, especially in cold winter months. We also plan to use attic space for some seasonal storage. I have spoken with the majority of our neighbors and they are on board with this addition we're proposing. Thank you for your time.
Very good. Thank you. I will start down there with you, Kevin.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Chris.
No questions. Thank you.
Ken Jay.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Scholz.
No questions at this time.
Corinne.
I don't have any questions either.
And Becky.
I don't think I have any. The house on the left where the garage is going to be, it's far away, right?
It is. My friend Kathy was here tonight to support me.
It looked like there's a lot of land between your house and where the next house.
That's why it's not really an issue with my neighbors because it's far away. We have plenty of space, so.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Becky. And so currently, right now, there's a driveway there. Is that basically going to replace the driveway?
Yes, yeah, the driveway needs to get replaced. We moved it over. The landscapes landscaping has been moved over. So right now, there's only hot top for one car, but we're going to make it to widen it. And I've already talked to the DPW.
So you're going to increase the curb cut?
I'm going to have to increase the curb, yes.
Very good.
Yeah.
And is there already a so is is there just one single curb cut at this property currently?
Actually, the curb cut was probably three cars wide because the original parking was in front of the house.
Okay.
And I didn't like that, so the landscaping is now in front of the house and the parking will be basically on the side of the house.
And as you look at the house, the left-hand side?
Exactly.
Where the new garage will be?
Yes.
Okay, and did you consider any slightly smaller garage that would then fit within the setback?
I did. I have a I have a truck. And our previous address, back in 2002, we parked my truck in the garage. And to be able to park a truck in a garage, it's got to be pretty good size to be able to get through the garage door. So that's why I'm, you know, building it, trying to get it to that width.
Okay, makes sense. And I'm just going to go out to our planning director. So Brian, they're here on the finding for the front setback and they're here on the variance for the side setback. I'm getting good at this. Okay, any additional questions from the board?
I just have one.
Yeah, go ahead, Corinne.
I noticed on the plan that it said you're going to have a pulldown, so I'm assuming that there are no stairs to upstairs. It's just the pulldown, or am I wrong about that?
You're correct. That's that was the plan, yes.
And that's where the extra storage will be?
Yeah, like whatever, you know, I can get up through there if it has to be there. But it's just, you know, some like cushions, that kind of stuff, seats where we have a pool in the back. Instead of storing in the basement, I like to store it up there, so.
Oh, no, it's the perfect spot for it. I agree. I just want to confirm that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go out to the public. We're here on 5 Watson Parkway. Anybody who want to be heard? 5 Watson Parkway. Anyone online, Brian? Very good. Kevin will start down there with you.
Yeah, I the the finding to me is is pretty easy. The standard for a finding is pretty low. The variance I have a harder time with. I think it's less the shape of the lot that's a problem and more the orientation of the house on the lot, which are not quite the same thing. I I have a hard time getting to substantial hardship for a garage. I think a garage is always a want, not a not a need. So if I were voting, I would not support the variance, but I would support the finding.
Very good. Chris.
I will vote yes on both the variance and the finding.
Thank you. Thank you. Ken Jay.
I'll vote yes on both the finding and the variance.
Thank you. Mr. Scholz.
I'll vote for both.
Thank you. Corinne.
I'll vote for both.
And Becky?
And I'll defer to the board.
Very good. And I too see this as, you know, a very simple and modest addition. So I too will vote in favor. We're going to need both a variance read and a finding read, board members. So if I could start with the finding, please.
A motion for a finding under Table 2 for front setback encroachment of a proposed garage addition that will be located 25.4 feet from the front setback where 30 feet is required. And that the proposed extension alteration of the use is not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure to the neighborhood.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. And variance, please.
Motion to issue a variance under Table 2 for side setback encroachment for a proposed garage addition that will be 12.1 feet from the property line where 20 feet is required. And that this condition does not affect other properties or structures in the same zoning district. A literal enforcement of the zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship to the applicant. The hardship is the irregular shape of the lot. Oh, wait, excuse me, one more.
Yeah.
Granting this variance will not create a substantial detriment to the public good and will not nullify or derogate from the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw.
I'll go second.
I've got a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. You got it. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay. Mr. Clerk, if we could read our last case.
Our next case is 152 Endicott Street. This is Zone Commercial 3, Map 63, Lot 14. Request a variance under Section 37 to allow a third building-mounted wall sign for a new hotel where a maximum of two signs per lot are allowed. The request is made by AAM Danvers Hotel LLC, care of OPG Construction, Dock at 25-5122.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. My name is David Sherborne, Vice President and Lead Architect at OPG Construction. With me tonight from AAM is Craig Finchdale. We're excited to be constructing a second building this year in Danvers. We recently completed early this year the Maple Square Apartments. So we're excited that the hotel is under construction. As mentioned, we are requesting a variance for a third sign, building-mounted wall sign with two are permitted for lots fronting two streets. If you go to the second page, there is a colored site plan there. So what we are calling sort of the by right to wall signs would be the one on the north side facing Endicott Street, the one on the southern facade facing Yankee Division Highway. And on the west side of the short end of the building, which is facing Chalet Court, would be the third sign we were asking the variance for. Part of the reason for the third sign is this is a branded hotel. It's a Hilton Home 2 Suites, an extended stay hotel. The next page there that you'll see, that'll be the sign facing Endicott Street. It's on the right-hand side there. That is a branding element. It's called the Beacon that you would see all Home 2 Suite branded hotels have. That's an important element for Hilton to have on their hotels and facing the main street frontage. If you go to the next page, Brian, the next element signage element here would be on the south side of the building, directly above the main entrance in the Porticusshire. And part of the challenges with this site, it's obviously very long in the east-west direction. The entrance into the site is off Chalet Court, which brings the approach to the end of the building. The placement of the entry in Porticusshire is on the southern side, mainly to, A, facilitate the efficient parking and meet the parking requirements that were needed by the town as part of the development. And also to allow on the western side and sort of the triangular piece of remaining sort of landscaped patio area would be an amenity to the hotel itself on the west side. If you go to the next slide here, this will be the third sign that we are asking for the variance of. I will point out that each of the signs, the one on the north side, its sign only accounts for 1% of the wall area at 95, 95 square feet. The one on the south elevation accounts for half percent of the total wall area of that south facade. And then on the west side elevation with the sign on the screen right now accounts for 3% of the wall elevation. I know that the ordinance has changed between the Maple Square project and here. I know that we can get one square feet per linear feet of frontage, building elevation facing the main primary front and then half square feet per linear feet on the secondary. All we have between all three signs is a combined area of 245 square feet. We've got combined between either if we take the short end of the building, you'd have 36 square feet of secondary plus 240 square feet. So on a conservative side, permitted of total wall area, permitted to be 276, which we would still be compliant with. If we could take the north and south where we have the sort of two by right signs, it'd be 360 square feet. Either way, we're less than the total combined wall area of sign available. And then finally, on this slide here, this would be the proposed elevation perspective. So this is where you'll get approaching the hotel from Chalet Court. We think it's an important addition to this building, given that first-time guests in particular, there's wayfinding to the hotel outside, trying to get them over to the right-hand side where the main entrance is, is an important element for both ownership but also Hilton as well. So with that being said, I will hand it back to you and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And just to be clear, so it's it's this sign we're talking about?
Correct.
Okay, and that is the one that I think is facing, I guess, Charlotte Court?
Charlotte, yep, correct, on the west end.
Okay, Becky, we'll start down there with you.
That's quite a building.
It is.
It went up fast. It looks good. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Corinne.
I I just want to kind of total up all the signs that you have. So you have the existing pylon sign. That's the one that was just installed by, was it Fidelity? Fidelity installed it.
Correct.
Which is the three-party sign, right? Salem Five, Fidelity, and then you guys.
Correct.
Then you have the existing directional signs you have. And now you have, let's see, three wall signs. One that one as of right and two, you are requesting permission to put up. And then you have the existing pylon sign that's facing out, correct?
Correct.
All right, so you have one, two, three, one, two, three, four, five, six, so seven signs. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Five, four of them existing, correct?
Yes, yes. Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne. Ken Scholz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too, Corinne, are trying to figure out the signage here. So the existing pylon sign that's on Endicott Street, you see that, you turn in, you're on Chalet Court, correct?
Correct.
And then when you're on Chalet Court, you see existing directional signs?
Correct.
Which puts you into the hotel parking lot.
Correct.
Okay, I don't have any further questions. I'll hold for comments.
Thank you, Ken. Ken Jay.
I have no questions.
Thank you. Chris?
No questions. Thank you.
Kevin?
No questions. Thank you.
Can I just clarify one thing? I think, Corinne, you would see that we're asking variance for two. It's only one sign we're asking for.
I'm sorry, yes. That's what I meant. Two as of right, one you are requesting permission for.
Sure.
Craig Finchdale, I'm with AAM. We were the owners of the hotel.
Okay.
That's being built by OPG. I just want to make clarification. When you come in through Chalet Court, just to answer your question, Mr. Scholz, when you get in, when you kind of come around that curve, you have a Fidelity building that's pretty well marked on your left and you're directly facing, if you could show that page again, with the one additional sign that we're talking about. But you're going to be facing a building not knowing that's the hotel and you're kind of sitting in no man's land between the Fidelity building because it's all shared parking. So you sit between Fidelity and the hotel, and this is just to make it very clear that this is the hotel on the right and Fidelity's on the left.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure I have any questions. I think I- I think I, yeah, I mean, you're, you're, well, maybe I do. Let's, let me, let me organize my thoughts.
Two, when you're done.
Yep. Thank you, Becky. So, the two, the two by right proposed wall signs total how much in square footage?
Your 150 square feet.
150?
Correct.
75 each? Or are they different sizes?
95 and 54, so to speak.
Okay. And then, so the idea is that that's kind of the front of the building, the back of the building, and the thought is that you need this other side, as was just described by your partner here, because the fact that Fidelity's to the left, you guys are to the right. And you don't feel people driving down Chalet Court will see that sign that's on the front of the building?
Well, well, if you go to, Brian, if you go to that rendering, you'll see that the one that's on Endicott Street really isn't visible, just because of the approach off Chalet Court. I think if you keep going to page five, maybe.
This one here?
Next one. So, you'll see that on the left-hand side there, the sign's really not visible, the one facing Endicott Street. And so, obviously, this being a hotel and being in the hospitality business, we're trying to make wayfinding as easy as possible, particularly for people that are coming here for the first time, not necessarily just through, during the day, but also at night as well.
Okay. And on that vein, so your lobby is underneath, to the right. So, there is no access for new guests on the left-hand side?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I've got. Go ahead, Becky.
And that, that's what I was trying to clarify, that once you come in on Chalet Court, the lobby is to the right.
Correct. And you have a choice to make. You can go straight ahead.
If you go straight in, you're in between Fidelity and the...
You're in Fidelity, you're between, and there's no entrance. The entrance is around to the right. So, we're trying to get people around...
So, this will direct you to the right of the building?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I got. Okay.
I have one more question.
What time is it? Go ahead, Becky. Sorry, Corrine.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I ask Mr. Sekeli's a question.
You may, yes.
What is the status of that road? Has it been, like, accepted by the town?
I don't think it has been accepted yet.
It's all paved, though. It's nice.
But I think it's planned. I would imagine the next possible time it's going to, it's going to be...
Will it go in front of, like, town meeting for, like, acceptance?
It has to, yeah.
Yeah.
It has to.
Okay. All right. So, it's still a paper road?
It's certainly not a paper road anymore.
Well, no.
It's constructed. It just has not been accepted by the town. Technically, it is a private, it's a private...
Private road, right.
At this time. But it's fully constructed, and we're very happy with its construction.
I think that whole intersection was changed, too, right?
It was modified. A lot of money was put, and infrastructure was put into that intersection.
A lot of different...
Like I said, we're, we're very satisfied, more than satisfied with how it turned out.
Well, I can tell you, compared to the old Denny's that was there and the eyesore that was there, it's a, it's a, it's a welcome addition, I think. With that said, I'll go out to the public on this. Is anybody here for 152 Endicott Street? Okay. You would have a comment? No? Okay. Okay. All right. With that said, we'll come back to the board, and I believe I started with you, Becky. Or did I start with Kevin?
I don't see a problem with this, but I'll defer to the board. Yeah.
Very good. Corrine?
I, I find your signage is tasteful. You do have a lot of it, but most of it's pre-existing. I'm not a huge fan of those big pylon signs, but they predate you, so there's nothing we can do about that. So, I will vote for this.
Very good. Ken?
I got to tell you, I have an issue with this. I personally think sign two should be where sign three is proposed. To me, there's no need for sign two. If you really need to see a sign coming down Chalet Court, that would be your wall sign number three. Sign two, to me, is unnecessary. You have an existing pylon sign for 128, so people can see, okay, this is where the hotel is. I need to take this exit. And then you have your pylon sign on Endicott to show how you get in. So, I'm a no on the, on the wall sign number three.
Thank you. Ken J.
I'll approve this.
Thank you, Ken. And Chris?
I will vote yes as well.
Okay. And Kevin?
I have a hard time understanding how I could get to the variance, the very, very high bar that is a variance for a sign in just about any circumstance. So, if I were voting, which I'm not, I would not support it.
I tend to agree with Ken on his assessment of this. I do feel like that back sign doesn't serve a purpose, particularly where you have the pylon sign out on 128. However, I think it's small enough and tastefully done. It is a new building. It'll be a new location. And with that said, I would vote in favor of it. So, we do have the votes to get it. And if I could get a motion, please.
Motion to grant a variance waiver under Section 37 to allow for a third building-mounted wall sign for a new hotel where a maximum of two wall signs are allowed, and that this condition does not affect other properties or structures in the same zoning district. A literal enforcement of the zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship to the applicant. Granting this variance/waver will not create a substantial detriment to the public good and will not nullify or derogate from the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw.
I've got a motion. Do I've got a second?
I second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, and good luck. And I hope it works out well.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
All right. Brian, I guess we'll have one last call on 153 Andover Street. Was there any correspondence with them today? It's indicating they wouldn't be present tonight?
No, they, they got their supplemental plan, which is, which is really the crux of what we, we wanted to see it. He, yeah, so he, he gave that in for the day of the, you know, the Tuesday before the meeting.
Let's continue.
So, I was like, I'll see you next, oh, next Monday. And he said, yes. So, that was the last correspondence. I do not have any calls from him today.
All right. Well, I guess before, the motion before the board is, do we, would we like to continue this? I guess if so, we would continue. My, my suggestion was, would be we continue this also to November 10.
Chairman, can I ask you, if I, if I recall, since this is a special permit, there's a time, like,